We call this meeting of the Community Emergency Services Committee to order this morning. Please bow with me. Our Most High and Mighty Lord, thank you for all of the blessings and bounty around us, signs of your love and grace. We give prayers for our nation, for our first responders, as they keep us safe and make our citizens feel so as well. As we gather today, please reside with us so that we may do what is right in your eyes and act as proper stewards of your reason. Thank you. Amen. Pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, the republic which stands one nation, God visible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for being here. We have quorum. Mr. Duncan is here now.
Yeah.
You're done, you're tanned and rested. Okay, thank you.
I don't know about that.
All right. We have the meetings, the previous meeting. The gentlemen have a chance to look it over.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
So moved. Mr. Johnson, are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Not to this one, Mr. Chairman. I believe we're good to go.
Very good, thank you. Any presentations this morning? Thank you. Consent agenda? None will move right to debate and new businesses and community services and animal services donations.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. We'll start off with some animal services donations. Michelle Artrip, 175, Barbara Williams, 100, and Subaru of America, $3,100. Staff recommends approval.
Move to consent. Second.
And so moved. Columbia County Care's lease?
Yes, this is the lease renewal agreement with Columbia County Care for use of the building out in Apling Harlem Road. Staff recommends entering into a new agreement.
Move to consent.
So moved. No added items? Mr. Driver, any legal matters? I see he's sitting in the back, so that's a go is a good sign. Any staff reports we have?
I have for your information, our response summaries for the year-to-date, the month, and our budget report. Be glad to answer any questions.
Gentlemen, have any questions about that? Thank you for the information. Any commissioners or public comments? Good. Anything for executive session?
Yes, sir.
We adjourn this meeting at 8:33?
Mark of efficiency.
He did good work.
Thank you, sir. Get a few minutes for turn.
All to order, the Public Works and Engineering Services, I think for March 23rd. Already having the application pledged. We do have a forum with all three members present. If I could, if you all are satisfied with the previous motion.
Accept.
Second.
Mr. Johnson, I see an item to be removed.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, with your permission, we'd like to remove item I-1B4. This is a resolution for a increase of a speed limit that we'll bring back at a later date.
Do you know a timetable on when that may be coming back?
Yeah, I would think we could probably get it back to the next committee.
Next, that's correct.
I don't see why we couldn't get it back to the next committee.
Okay, thank you very much. All right. I don't, I don't think we have any presentations this morning, no consent agenda, so we'll get right into the debate. Mr. Clayton.
Morning, sir, how are you?
Well, y'all sure taught me a lesson. I wasn't here at the last county commission, y'all done hired somebody for the director for the one.
You need to show up.
I won't miss no more.
That'll teach you.
Know the man that y'all hired and only one of me, isn't it?
I agree with you, sir. I agree with you.
He's the second choice.
Okay, well, good. Thank you, sir.
Sir, now, on to business. I'm on the wrong end. I wouldn't either, neither. Dowling Drive Sewer Extension, when we started on Dowling Drive, we had a sewer, by the time it got down to creek, not too good, the creek had eroded away. And then we get up on Dowling Drive, one residence had Putten Green on top of the sewer, other one had built. That is down there by the creek. But then we got doing the work in Spring Lakes. Fixing the third, a third creek crossing down there, and with Dowling Drive, so we decided just to take it all that way. Well, that's a lot more expensive to do, a hundred thousand we saved out of the Spring Lakes contract. Didn't near come cover the extra cost we're now facing, but we knew gonna face some, because we'd already knew wrong. So with that, all that being said, we had originally budgeted $250,000 for Dowling Drive. Gonna be able to get rid of two creek crossings, and y'all have just a sounder operating system. Gonna get out from under the Putten Green.
I see that Putten Green.
I should too. I would, right on top of the sewer, which you can.
It'll be real green grass.
Little Putten Green on top of it, now that pool permanent. They did, but be that as it may, I guess I could've made them dig their pool up and move it, but I don't want to do those kinds of things. I've been here for 46, right there and just make people mad. But be that as it may, before I let this job out for bid with only budgeting $250,000, I wanted to bring it back before you all. That project now is at $725,000, money well spent right there, 'cause again, you have much sounder system. Recommend changing that funding level for Dowling Sewer. Plus, it's actually gonna be the Dowling Spring Lakes. I would recommend that amount project.
Did the residents know they were building in a, or right away? Guess not.
Pool guy supposed to know. Obviously, he didn't know or care. Probably wasn't going to hit the sewer. Fine, but the problem is, if I have to go in there and dig, had a problem. But there's no need to go in that area and do the kind of work we were gonna do, not resolve those. Take care of all that, and we're ready to go.
Personally, I think it makes sense, like you saying, screw up that line and get out of the creek as much as you can. Makes sense to do, they're doing the work.
Leave it to Mr. Skinner to let his people know that we gave him a mulligan this one.
A big mulligan. Move to consent.
Yes, miss.
Really not, you could. Quick, claim it back.
On them, they're not gonna be calling us to repair the pool?
That's not my land. But I would.
Good question, Chris, just if we abandon this, and then two years down the road, it implodes, and the pool sinks.
The pool would.
We got a motion?
Yes, we did.
Yeah, second.
Good solution, Clayton.
On March 11th, Columbia County received bids for the installation of silent light distance, both of our water treatment. O-bid was submitted by M.B. Khan out of Columbia, South Carolina. Have had a contract with him in the past. They were all right. Went the best, but they went to work all right. Their bid was an amount of $12,798,897. Originally set aside $10 million for this project, but three years to get to a point of bidding, and just that price took, that's where almost all the bids came in at. So we gonna recommend that this project be awarded at a mount.
Tobacco instead of this, sir?
I'd rather do this than buy trucks.
How many trucks I buy for this?
Yeah, yeah, all they make.
But, but as this moves forward, we'll get started on this project. Pete?
I think it's got a 20 production period.
Really?
Month, month, 21 month, not day.
What'd I say, day? I'm sorry, 21 months.
I was impressed. Yeah, this is, for those who don't know, this hopefully will eliminate the smell and the drinking water from the.
Taste, taste.
Right.
Algae has caused.
Right.
But it'll do a lot of other things, too. Pharmaceutical. They start making us, we're already testing for some unregulated parameters, no regulation part of it.
Move to consent, and congratulations for getting it here. I know it's been a long time.
I'm not sure that you did. All timed out. And I will share this with you. First water state of Georgia. Section. Congratulations to you all.
All for getting out there and getting to work and looking at it and whatever, so thank you for that.
Second.
So move.
I really thought that algae problem was gonna go away, 'cause we never had it before, but. On February 25th, Columbia County received bids for improvements at our Reed Creek and Little River wastewater treatment plant. This project will place all the influent creek plant right there. About 20 years. And they're fairly good-sized pumps, and of all the pumps failing at your wastewater plant, so be rivers are motion. It'll also replace the covers that we have on the aeration bases, those are fiberglass covers, and they're 20 something, so gotten real scary brittle. And that, all those covers do is those impellers turn and those basically keeps that aerosol mist from having people exposed to it. O-bid was, and only bid, was submitted by Southern Civil LLC out of Townsend, Georgia, in a amount of $1,317,000. In all candid, I had never heard of this company. Church. Had me understanding, another company that comes in here, great work for RW, they've done. This was their best form left and started his own company. After hearing that, I'm very, he got bonded, so very comfortable with recommending that we were to bid.
Are they are a new company?
Barely new, about a year old.
Move to consent.
Second, with a verify their bonding company's ability.
He couldn't even put a bid in without that.
Yeah.
Bonding company's supposed to be at least rated at A before we accept them.
So move on that. I know the former company he worked for has done a lot of work.
They have.
Since I've been here.
He was their best form.
Okay.
American dream. Obviously didn't.
All righty. Tides, I believe you're up.
Sir, good morning. The first item we have for you is a public hearing on the proposed establishment of a streetlight district, 515B for Southwind Village Phase Two. Staff received a petition from the residents. We've reached out to Georgia Power and gotten their costs, which are shown below, upfront poll cost of $8,427.42. Annual utility cost of $37,792.96, and we would like to open it up for public comment.
Public hearing. Party to speak. Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Okay, the second item we have for you is a resolution for the same resolution 2106 to establish streetlight district 515B for Southwind Village Phase Two. Petition from residents, and the costs are shown below. In addition, the annual revenue at $6 per lot would be approximately $3,540 per year. Staff recommends approval of the first of two readings for the resolution, and upon approval of the second reading, we'll authorize Georgia Power to proceed with installation for their proposal.
This one's a loser from day one.
Now, staff is currently reaching out to, working with procurement to find a firm that can audit our current streetlight policy, to determine if the fee that we're currently charging is appropriate, so we're working through that as well.
Move to consent.
Second.
Need to go to debate.
Second, debate.
Needs to go to debate.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We'll move to.
The next item we have is to reclassify North Old Bel Air Road to a minor collector. It's currently a local road, classified as a local road. This is, so if you come off of Hartford Farm on William Smith, come down through the roundabout, and then it turns into North Old Bel Air Road. William Smith Boulevard is currently a minor collector. We'd like to reclassify North Old Bel Air to be a minor collector as well. Reason for is because since that connection was made between those two roads, traffic vehicle counts on that road have increased 132%. They're up to around 3,000 cars per day, and local roads have an average daily traffic of up to about 700. Confident it should be a collector.
Okay, there's a couple of tables out there, whatever, they will stay.
Correct, those are at intersections, they're not, they're not on the corridor, they're at intersections, so they're gonna stay, they're speed tables, not speed humps.
People on Old North Bel Air, they had a couple of speed humps. They went away when the widening.
Far as I know, that's correct.
No, no intent on putting those back or whatever.
We wouldn't be able to with, with, as a collector, we wouldn't be able to put the speed humps back.
Width of the road, what the width of the road will be, us changing this, we're not gonna go through and widen. I had a conversation with a couple of residents, and they were concerned with coming back to try and.
No, you're correct, the geometry would stay the same. Be reclassified to a minor collector.
I can't promise that till Jesus comes back, it's gonna stay there. At one point, you know, Washington Road was two lanes right here, but we have no current plans to do any kind of widening to the road.
What, what, do we know what a volume number would be for it?
It would have to, it'd have to go up to around 12,000, 13,000 for us to widen it, here at 3,000, so.
And what's the logic, the overall logic for changing the type of road? What is it? Why do it?
Changing the classification.
Yes.
Basically changes the, the way the road is used. A local road is made for servicing a house, servicing a business. You're going on that road for a reason, you're getting to something on that road. A collector is collecting all those local streets and getting them to arterial roads. This basically has become a cut-through from Columbia Road to Hartford Farm Road, which we wanted.
Like it was supposed to.
That's right, we wanted another way to get people back and forth from Hartford Farm to Columbia Road without having to go all the way down to Bel Air or all the way down to that way. Basically, you're collecting traffic out of neighborhoods and putting them on the collector road, but roads then gets you out to arterial roads.
Okay, so why change it?
Classification allows you to then adjust the speed limit and allows you to enforce it. So the sheriff's department doesn't have the ability to enforce the speed limit within a neighborhood because of the type, the classification of the road.
Thank you, that's why.
Okay, and I feel that this, the traffic here will really pick up as construction gets cranked up on Hartford and Lewis Road or whatever, so we wouldn't do a test widening that.
Oh, no, sir.
While there were any outlying.
No, sir.
Circumstances. What's your plea?
Move to consent.
Second.
So move. Item moved.
We'll bring that back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Next item, Mr. Tides?
The next item we have is for safety lighting at several intersections. We've received requests to evaluate several, Ray Owens Road at Ridge Road, Scott's Ferry at Tubman Road, Hartford Farm Road at Crestwood Parkway, and River Watch Parkway at Jamaica Court. We've reached out to Jamaica, Jamaica, we've reached out to Georgia Power and gotten their proposals. Notice for Ray Owens at Ridge Road, that is, for two poles to be installed there, along with River Watch Parkway at Jamaica Court would also be two poles. Costs are shown in the table below, staff recommends approval.
Move to consent.
Second.
So move.
The next item we have is for message boards for roads and bridges. Staff is requesting to purchase three message boards. Road and bridges work with procurement to advertise for the replacement of three boards. This was in their budget, originally budgeted for $73,500. We received two quotes, with the lowest bidder being at $52,425, well in the budget. Again, this was approved in the, their budget, and we recommend approval. Award the, the bid to Safety Zone Specialist in the amount of $52,425. For the record, the three message boards that we are replacing, the reason we are replacing those is because they're not remote capable, so you actually have to go to them physically, program them. The ones that we are, are being replaced, we are repurposing with Recreation Department, so they'll be able to utilize for sporting events, whatever, whatever have they.
So the other ones are still in service and will be.
Will be reused.
Are these the stationary boards that we have?
Yes.
They're portable, but they're.
They're portable.
Okay, not the ones like on Furious Ferry that's.
No.
Portable, portable, once they usually get somewhere, they stay for a while, they're not.
Right.
But they can, you can program them remotely from your phone and stuff.
So you could ask somebody, hey, if we needed to move one, he could run grab it, and somebody else could be programming, and it'd be set up by the time they get it where they need it to be.
Basically, yeah, that's right.
Move to consent.
Second.
So move.
The next item we have is a street lighting contract with Jefferson Energy for Greenpoint Phase 1A. We've already had both readings for this resolution. We reached out to Jefferson Energy, and we got two cost proposals. One is to pay for the poles upfront, the other is to have the, the pole cost included in the annual fees. Staff is recommending approval of option one, which is to pay for the poles up, pole cost upfront, as we see savings after the first year or two.
Checking Georgia Power to see if they ever get back.
Georgia Power never responded. I know Matt.
Yeah, they didn't give us a formal response, they basically called and said, you don't want us out there, your cost will be way too high, because they'd have to build to get to that area.
Okay. I guess this underground service charge that I've never seen before, it built in on Georgia Powers, or is it something that they don't?
Georgia Power rolls all that into their cost and gives it to us upfront, they've never, it's built in, that's right.
Right, yeah, what did it cost us to bury the lines over here on 300 and something? Quarter of a million dollars, thirty years of maintenance, they.
Yeah, that's right, they built in forty years of maintenance into the install cost, so we paid for it upfront. I guess with Jefferson, we're paying for it upfront, they're letting you know exactly what you're paying.
Move to consent.
Second.
Ask a question, since you mentioned over here, did we get the wires moved?
Brian, our best, we've, we've reached out to the companies, they said that they don't have a contract with us, that they don't care what we think. I've reached out to Georgia Power and asked them to take their poles off of our property. If Georgia Power takes the poles down, then those folks will have to follow suit.
Georgia Power.
They're working it.
Listening to your request.
Harry's working it, and he's trying to go through his legal side up and see what he can do about taking the pole down.
I'm getting my chainsaw serviced at Harry's right now.
Yeah, we only granted a temporary easement, so it's not a permanent easement, so I think we, we'll have to get rid of that easement and make those poles go away.
Next item, sir.
The next item we have is for Lewiston Road widening amendment number four with Kimley Horn. So this is a large credit to Steve Exon and his staff, but the original plan was to actually demolish the barrier walls along the bridge, the parapet walls, and reconstruct those. Staff realized that we could actually save those walls, they reached out to GDOT and determined that it was feasible to save these, these walls, however, we would have to do a redesign for that specific component of the design, we'd have to resubmit through permitting, it would add some construction, administration, construction services cost as well. However, from a construction standpoint, it would save, I think in net about $450,000, Steve. So the cost for this amendment with Kimley Horn is $86,000, $86,699.36 to have them redesign, re-permit, and additional construction services. Staff recommends approval.
Move to consent. Second.
Move.
The next item we have is to establish a countywide procedure for children at play signs. Recently, I know a commission received a request to install some children at play signs for a resident and their child. Working with staff and going through the literature, the Institute for Transportation Engineers does not recommend installing children at play signs. It creates a false sense of security for both the children and the drivers. So we would like to establish a countywide procedure to where we do not install these, and we have in your documents all the reasons why, and we would, we would attribute the procedure for anybody that requests it. Staff recommends adopting the procedure.
I need to just set one of those out, I know they're like the sandwich boards I've seen, so can an individual do that? Please just set one of those out. I know they're like the sandwich boards I've seen. So can an individual do that or would we ask them to remove it or what would we?
I think Ma, Mr. Slot on a local road, they're, they're welcome to do that, um, but.
Those are not a permanent install. If they just put a little sandwich board, like you said, the little guy holding the flag.
Right.
We're okay with that. We're just not gonna install a county maintain, seven-foot post, big sign.
I would think even then it'd be part of our sign ordinance, have to conform with our sign ordinance, even the sandwich board type post. It could be there for some period of time, but if it's in the right of way, now if they put it on private property, it'd be.
Move to consent.
Second.
Go move.
This is to, this is them asking us to put a, a roadway sign, the yellow sign, children at play. So this is not part of our sign ordinance. Roadway signs are not part of the county sign ordinance. This is just a procedure that the commission is telling us that we are not gonna install those signs because they are not recommended. But people see them and they want them. They think it, it makes it a safer road for their kid to play in, and that's not what we wanna encourage. There's some out there, yes.
Yeah, there's some.
Will we can. I don't, I don't know that we wanna. Yeah, we can definitely remove them if that's the desire.
If the policy states that we're not gonna have them, I think that's probably where it'd be. Don't continue to have requests and, well, I just picture one.
I agree. We'll take them down. Understood.
Oh.
Mm-hmm.
We did.
Item, sir.
So the next item we have is a resolution twenty-one oh eight to amend the Nicole's Cove Section One Streetlight District, number four oh two. Uh, this district was created in two thousand and four, uh, to install fourteen lights. Staff received a request to install additional streetlights due to lack of lighting. We reached out to Georgia Power and requested they reevaluate, reevaluate this district, um, to see if additional light was warranted. Upon completion of their findings, Georgia Power recommended we add one additional streetlight. Below is the cost that Georgia Power proposed. Uh, the upfront cost, upfront pole cost of four hundred and sixty-eight dollars and nineteen cent with annual utility cost two hundred and ten dollars and seventy-two cents, which would be for adding one a pole, amending that streetlight district at one light pole. Um, staff recommends adoption of the resolution.
Those people were already in the districts, so they were already being charged, correct?
Correct. Correct. So this is not, you're not changing a fee, you're just allowing us to pay for another light.
Move to consent.
Second.
Go move.
Okay, the next item we have is for green infrastructure, low-impact development program update and stormwater utility credit manual update proposal from Goodwin Mills K Wood. Anyways, you might wanna go ahead and work your way up this way. The light going on this, uh, this is a twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and fifty-five dollar proposal, uh, with Goodwin Mills K Wood. It includes three tasks. Um, uh, Georgia EPD in two thousand and twenty began requiring new redevelopment projects to meet stormwater quality needs by using GI LID practices. Um, to prepare for this, we are requesting, we've, we've reached out to GMC and requested, we've requested several things. One is for them to develop a standard operating procedure for us to do these type inspections. Um, and then two is for a one-day training to walk us through this. Um, the third component of this proposal is to actually, um, update our stormwater fee credit manual. Um, this is to further incentivize, uh, positive stormwater management practices um, by adding additional credit options, uh, streamlining some of the existing options. Um, I'm not sure what.
Was it something that, uh, stormwater person that participates in stormwater fee that they could do something to get a reduction?
It basi, it.
Put in a rain garden or whatever.
It, it basically allows our stormwater fee credit manual to be more user-friendly. It, it allows more options for folks to actually participate and further incentivizes people to practice better management practices. Somewhat counterintuitive, but if we invest now and the folks start better practices, stormwater rain barrels, less than purpose service, et cetera, et cetera, um, then it's gonna save us stormwater on the, on the back end. Save, save us with the maintenance and management that we have to do, that our operations group has to deal with.
So where everybody, if they wanted to participate in some sort of way, they could save money.
They're able to utilize what tools are in the manual. That's correct.
All right, I, I do have another question. There's something about, uh, factor for position, creating a new, uh, employee, or is it somebody that's on staff that would do this or?
Um, well, possibly. This requirement's coming. We're gonna have to meet it. So whether or not we add a new employee, which we have requested, or we, you know, move another staff to fill that void, the void is, has been. Because the, the development requirements are in place. We have a feasibility in place for the, for the county, and now we just need to make sure that staff can handle it.
Current plan is actually have this position filled with the new budget.
It's, it's in the budget.
It is in the budget.
It is in the budget that you've been presenting so far, yes, sir. As of now, it's in the budget.
Move to consent.
Second. Okay, the next item we have is for an easement encroachment agreement at six twelve Wimber Court and seven seven nine Marsh Point Road. Uh, I know the commission recently granted a variance to the Wimber Court property to relocate their driveway, uh, outside the PUD. Correct map. Um, so this is for retaining wall across the back of these properties. Uh, it would include a, uh, cold joint at the property line. Um, however, the retaining wall will encroach into our drainage utility easement. Uh, there are no infrastructure, county infrastructure, yeah, there's no county infrastructure within the easement. Staff recommends approval.
Couple, a couple of meetings.
Oh, it's actually two lots. It's the neighbors. They have different addresses because of where the driveway is located, but these are side by sides, and it's to allow that retaining wall to cross.
Move to consent. One of the peculiar access.
Correct.
Okay.
Oh, you've already, you've already approved the variance. Now you're giving them permission to be in our easement.
Move to consent.
Go move.
Second.
Oh, your second.
Okay, the last item we have is for an easement, uh, encroachment agreement with, uh, at one eleven Clarion Bridge Lane. Uh, the owners wish to construct a pool that will encroach into our ten-foot drainage and utility easement on the rear of the property. There is no county infrastructure within. Staff recommends approval.
Those the, uh, add around the pool.
That's correct. The actual pool structure is not in the.
Move to consent.
Second.
Go move. Hello, sir. How are you?
Morning.
I have a question up front. Uh, recommendation typically takes about thirty days and comments can be given by both entities. May lead to further changes to the plan. So they, they cha, they can change what we've worked a year and a half on?
Uh, they can make, uh, recommendations. Uh, now with that, there's two, uh, two agencies you referred to, and what we're here today to, uh, have the committee do is move forward a resolution to the full commission next week. So that, uh, with that approval, we can transmit this comprehensive plan update to the Department of Community Affairs as well as the Regional Commission for Review. Uh, with DCA, they can offer major changes or minor changes. Major changes are something that are most likely will need to be, uh, updated in our plan to address, uh, specific items that may not be in compliance with the State Enabling Act for planning. Most likely, if, if that happens, which we don't anticipate with our plan, um, we would have to make some corrections to that plan and update. Um, if they're minor changes, uh, we can take or leave them. It's our choice. Um, and again, we don't really anticipate that as well. But that's part of the process, so that's why we're here today. And, uh, I'll just go quickly through.
I just ask, what would be a major that they could force on us that we, and, and you don't anticipate that?
No. Well, like, for example, one of the required elements is the broadband element. And, um, they're looking for specific language. They're looking for something that, uh, needs to apply kind of statewide that we didn't address in our plan. We think we did it right and we did, you know, a very narrow scope or something of that sort. And they're looking for a broader, specific wording, um, sentence or paragraph that we decided we didn't think appropriate. They've forced that, they want that in there.
Not that we recommend.
Not that we anticipate that.
We recommend that you do this type of certain.
Yeah. In order to, they may say, in order to ensure compliance with the State Enabling Act, we want you to put this in there.
But I don't think they're gonna come back and say, change this zoning to this.
It has nothing to do with that.
They're not, they're not gonna come back with that kind of change.
No, no.
Yeah, zoning, power of zoning lies with this board.
Yeah.
No document, no state agency could, could compel you to make zoning. That's the one constitutional right you have as county commissioner.
Well.
That's one of the, but it's the major one.
There, there's, there's a lot of different insight on what we, how our growth needs to be going that.
So just, uh, just real quickly, I, I put together, uh, well, a, a presentation, uh, just to give it its due course. Uh, we've been working on this since February of last year. As you know, uh, we went through a pandemic, so that kind of curtailed some of the, uh, intent of our robust public involvement, but at the same time, we did, um, get a fair amount of input from the community. Uh, just point out real quickly, the, uh, front page here, that is the current, uh, cover of the twenty thirty-five comprehensive plan that was adopted in twenty sixteen. This will be the proposed updated, uh, version, a little cleaner, a little, um, glitzier. Graphics are a little updated. Um, again, we went through the entire plan, but didn't make changes to all areas of the plan. Um, and in particular, I'm gonna focus just briefly on sort of the public involvement portion towards the end in public review comment period that was, uh, the month of February for the whole plan itself, uh, online. Uh, overall, we had, uh, forty-nine comments online, a few emails, uh, that had, uh, some were just a couple of responses, couple were fairly lengthy in their, uh, commentary. And then at the public hearing, we had two different speakers. Uh, again, most of them were editing, which is kind of a good and bad thing. Mostly the content was there and just a little bit of tweak, maybe turn a phrase, things of that nature. Uh, some of the other areas, uh, that were edited were, or, or, excuse me, were commented on, or commercial development, as you would expect. Um, rural and, um, rezonings, again, some of that. We expected green space, uh, you know, save more, save all, uh, and just some general policy-type questions. And, uh, one of the things that we did was we, um, we rented, rented, uh, an online survey, um, program. And so what it did was you went in there and looked at it online. You could actually click on a pin spot and go in and make all your comments and type, type in your comments and then send them off. And, uh, there were three of us that were, um, viewing those on a daily basis. So we got them in real time and could respond back to the person that emailed those in. So it was a very good tool to, uh, to use moving forward. And again, you see some of the other comments that were made online. Again, multiple comments made about development, uh, a lot of concern about, you know, where we're headed. Um, you know, types of, uh, product that we're getting, types of products that we should be considering, things of that nature. Um, and then a lot of it to deal with clarification on the goals and strategies that not only exist, uh, in the current plan, but then some of the tweaks that we, uh, were proposing as part of this, uh, updating course editing. Um, and at the public hearing at the planning commission a couple of weeks ago, we had two speakers, uh, speak more to the flexibility of the plan and not being as rigid about what is in there and holding firm to that. And then, um, being able to adjust on the fly as we move forward over the next five, ten, fifteen years. And then using it more as a policy rather than a, a specific guide. Um, again, the housing affordability issue has come up in the recent, uh, weeks and months. Um, I don't see that changing, given our current market, uh, out there, uh, and the development costs associated with permitting and requirements of the codes that we have on hand. So, um, you know, we addressed all of the edits that were, um, brought up in the review, uh, over the past month and a half. Uh, we, one of the good comments that we didn't have in the, uh, initial edit, or excuse me, in the initial, um, draft was, uh, we didn't have that, uh, any captions for the photos, so we added that, thought that would help, uh, clarify some of the, uh, pictures that were put in the, uh, plan. And, uh, as part of the community work program, we had a lot of the GPA, you know, the, the acronyms and jargon. So, um, cleaning that up, making sure we had it, uh, clear for, uh, the public that they understood what it was. Uh, again, what, what we did here was, is we did an update to the full plan, but one of the things I thought was a really, um, smart move on our part was to add two different character areas to the plan this year. And, um, that's really addressing sort of what's going on already out there. And one is the lake neighborhoods and the other one isn't really, uh, hasn't really been addressed, uh, formally, is in-town neighborhoods. And that's kind of that redevelopment discussion that we're starting to have more and more about how do we handle our aging neighborhoods and our aging, uh, commercial areas. So I think handling that in, in a formal way is gonna start that conversation towards, uh, future development plans for those areas. Uh, we did add one new, uh, corridor type. It's a rural corridor, uh, mostly for, obviously out in the west end of the county. And then further redefining those, uh, activity centers and community crossroads. We have a couple that have probably, uh, as you saw earlier, we moved, uh, road classification up one. We did that with some of the community crossroads that have probably been rural or more rural in nature a couple of years ago, are now not so rural, and so those have been upgraded. And then redefining those activity centers where we had particularly at Lewiston, Lewiston, uh, interchange, as well as Appleton Harlem, kind of recognizing what has happened over the last five years, uh, with those. And we'll, I'll show those in a couple of slides. Again, this is the update. I don't, I don't wanna overemphasize that, but in four years, we'll be back in again, if not sooner, working on a full revision of the whole, uh, plan. So this is the current approved twenty sixteen, uh, future development map. Um, and, you know, the usual, you got your neighborhoods in the yellow, uh, the darker green is your, uh, rural areas. Uh, the activity centers are kind of in that pinkish purplish area. This is the proposed, uh, future development map. Again, very similar. We did make some, uh, adjustments to more or less what's really happening out on the ground. I'll point out kind of this area down here went from neighborhood to rural based on how that's been developed, mostly, uh, already developed in rural character. Uh, then you see there, out there were historic Appleton, Pollard's Corner. Those, those two new corridors are the rural corridors. We did do a couple over in the, um, District One, District Two areas, Bel Air, Evans to Locks, things of that nature. Again, a little, uh, cleaner, trying to, uh, address all of the issues that are out there. Uh, again, we talked about, uh, two new, uh, character areas. One, um, in particular, Lake Neighborhood, uh, is really to address sort of what's already happening out at the lake. Uh, this is, uh, anticipating some new development, but largely, uh, some of the redevelopment that we anticipate that may occur in the next several years for Clark's Hill Lake. Uh, most of that, or almost all of that is owned to R four currently, so that's kind of talking about what we think might happen out there and what we hope might happen in the future. Uh, again, this is sort of where those, those three big areas are, out by the lake, as you can see. Um, continuing the low-density development pattern, but also trying to enhance that economic and tourism value of the lake.
Can I, can I interrupt you for, I'm sorry, sir?
Certainly can. You're in charge.
Can I interrupt you for a second? Uh, can we back up to the, uh, the map that had? Uh, can we back up to the, uh, the map that had, yes, uh, that area directly north of Amazon and to the left, to the west of Appleton? Um, how much discussion and what type was, was it? Um, in reclassifying that or advancing it?
Yeah.
I mean, I, I want Dr., I want Mr. Clayton's successor to be able to drop the shovel as in regards to sewers. And if you have one acre homesites in that area, uh, it's gonna come down to that.
Yeah, and, and I think so to that end, there was a, a fairly healthy amount of discussion for a extended period of time, probably the last six, eight months.
There's an excess of 1,200 acres there that somebody have their eye on.
So just so that everybody can kind of see, this is I-20 right here. So Amazon and that area is kind of just on the north side there in that activity center, the commercial center, activity center. So some of the change that occurred is kind of this area right out here. What you, what you see there is sort of a look into the future of what may be possible with in terms of development, um, whether that is, uh, residential development. Again, this doesn't dictate the zoning, uh, at this time. It only opens that door for consideration. It does not force the mission to take action in that regard. It, you guys can kind of control when that might be appropriate. In terms of the, uh, utility service for that, um, if they're gonna do less than two and a half acres, which is mostly what the RA zoning out there is, it's mostly zoned RA, excuse me, out there now, they're gonna, if they're gonna develop it at a much higher density than sewer, gonna be required to do that, they're gonna have to get a zoning that, you're gonna have to come through commission to get approved. So, um, we talked a lot about that. We talked about, you know, what sewer demand is available and what sewer demand might become available. Those aren't quick turnarounds.
Could you, could you see if you, uh, expanded the sewer that with all of the property out there, that residential development uses up a large percentage of the sewer that you're actually intending for your industrial park or not necessarily?
Uh, not necessarily. I think, you know, most of what the discussion, uh, that had taken, has taken place over the last number of months has centered around, there's a limited amount of non-industrial capacity available. Um, and I don't have that number. So, you know, if there is an interest in desire to develop non-industrial, may get some, but you won't get a lot. And, um, in order to get a lot, you're gonna need to look at upgrading the, um, sewer capacity in that area, which is not a quick turnaround, as I mentioned. So, um, any interest in developing this area beyond sort of what is on the table, so to speak, is gonna require that, um, that improvement to that area before it really will take off. Uh, but in regards to the residential eating up the current capacity, I don't, I don't see that as being, uh, an option, viable option at this point.
Just to point out, it does, and if you read the rural neighborhood write-up, it does mention one acre.
Right.
So for a one acre lot, you must be RA zoning. The R1 is 30,000, so if we want the, trying to say, one acre requirement is still gonna thought as RA zoning. So technically, they wouldn't have to come back to us, change zoning to build this neighborhood. However, if they wanna get down less than the acre, they gotta have sewer.
That goes to R1.
R1.
At a minimum, yeah.
Right. I guess what I'm, what I'm trying to say is because we're calling this a rural neighborhood, it's not, don't expect to see R2 type zoning out there. We're basically writing it in so that it's still farm-based, agricultural-based, but allow people to put houses out there on, on a two and a half acre lot with no sewer.
Or, or a one acre lot with no sewer.
One acre lot, that's right.
Yeah. And, and I think that's just a recognition of the step down from a, you know, a, a large lot development to a slightly smaller. If somebody wants to go R1, R2, that's gonna be a, that's gonna be a tough sell at this point. And again, I'll, I'll reiterate, you know, we're, we're looking at these in five-year increments. So, you know, this isn't a one and done and we won't, you know, have to ever worry about this again. We'll be back at this again in four years. And think about four years ago, how much has changed in Columbia County. So again, this is an ever-evolving process and project, um, one that we'll look at on a daily, weekly basis in houses, as staff, but certainly on a broader scale where we're talking here, you're, you're looking in four and five-year increments and trying to anticipate what's gonna happen really in the next four or five years. Look at it longer term than that, but of course, you know, we'll adjust on the fly as we need.
I'd be glad to share some information now with you if you'd like.
Totally.
Right now, you got a capacity out there to build. Uh, any industry out there unless it's, I've heard of possibility, tell me the low. Turn off dinner, say, package in and back out all dinner. South River County. Oh, but you know, that plan is a, I wasn't got on the day plant now, you can take 750 before they could build those homes. Once you saw it coming, got time to react.
We've asked for a plan, mansion plan, that's in the works.
We've got, we've got ideas, yes. Now, we have not engineered it, but we've got lines on paper, the bills worked on, put together some cost estimates.
That's right. Matt had me look at it. You can move, we're out of this area, back to the, have plenty of capacity. Uh, but we've already gotten a waste load, what they call a waste load allocation, a Kewke plant for, uh, 750,000. Now you're talking about the ability to build 6,000 homes or to build 3,000 and a half capacity. Y'all will be, what happens there? Where's the developer goes? I mean, it's just a place to do a business. That decision, one house on that one acre or five? Hell, man, that is.
Sure. We probably wouldn't be able to find you in six months to, you to answer that question.
I'm gonna establish a, you know, voting right. Be fine.
You thought his bills were big now?
Uh-huh.
All right. So the other new character areas I mentioned was, uh, in-town neighborhoods and, you know, and one of the things when I first got here that, you know, I, I don't think I started the conversation, but I think I, you know, helped bring it along a little further, or at least I hope so, was the discussion of redevelopment in Columbia County. It's not really been, uh, a big issue. Uh, previously, I think it's gonna become more and more of an issue as we continue to age, uh, in some of our in-town neighborhoods. And so we thought this was a pretty good opportunity to take, put that formally on paper and start that discussion. And even if it doesn't really take hold in the next year or two, and I think it will, um, begin to, uh, gain more interest and gain more traction. So one of the things this does is it helps to, uh, formalize it, uh, in the plan, but then also allows us to kind of look at that in terms of, uh, future development of zoning regulations, should that become, um, necessary. So again, this is sort of your in-town areas. Slide here that talks about, you know, where those areas are located, uh, again, primarily in the eastern county, uh, where you do have some neighborhoods that have been here a good number of, uh, years and decades. So as that transition occurs and continues to occur, how do we want to address those areas and what are we looking at doing? Um, again, that may be simply be, uh, replacing the housing types that are there, uh, but it also may allow us some opportunities where appropriate to allow other types of, um, uses, uh, residential primarily, uh, but some live-work type, um, consideration. Again, most of that's going to only occur within the major corridors of those areas. It's not going to be middle of an existing single-family neighborhood where you expect to see the light kind and then get a completely different land use in there. So again, that was a good opportunity to, uh, kind of formalize that and bring that discussion to the forefront. Uh, as I mentioned, we had some corridor updates, uh, again, out at the west end of the county, added a couple of rural char, uh, rural corridors. Uh, that's Lewisville Tubman, um, Scotts Ferry, A- uh, Appleton Harlem. Then, here, uh, really just kind of acknowledging the, uh, Washington Road corridor, uh, between the, uh, activity centers there, uh, and then adding a couple of, uh, ending a couple of the professional corridor.
I, I made, I made my comments a couple of times, even at the meeting that I probably shouldn't have been at, but anyway, I was there and I made.
That's a good meeting, you were, you were always welcome.
Thank you for that, sir. But, you know, as you continue, uh, everybody think, takes for granted that Washington Road is gonna develop, but the way I see it is if it continues to ease on out, is the death following it?
Yeah.
As it extends out. So I really have a concern with letting it push on out and we're, we're not, we're not that far from Martin Air sitting right here where we are today. So I, I think we really need to.
Yeah, so one of the things here in particular and a couple of these corridors been, uh, in, in particular interest, I think, you know, the language is recognizing sort of what has been the existing pattern, if you will. But one of the things we did add in this, uh, update was, so these corridors where we have a fairly long, um, stretch of, uh, corridor, but it's not fully developed. We have put language in there that prefers and encourages development from, say, the end nodes, which in this case are our two activity centers, to work from those activity centers back towards the middle rather than haphazardly hitting it all the way throughout the, uh, the corridor that's shown there. Part of that's gonna be helped along by the fact that in some of these, uh, corridors, we don't have utility services that can be provided. So one of the benefits of that is if you're, Mr. Clayton's point, if you're doing any more intense commercial use that requires sewer and sewer's not at that midpoint, you know, area out here perhaps, you're either gonna have to extend that, which helps then further along the corridor, or you can't go there. And so again, working your way out from the, uh, activity centers is the preferred method. Uh, it's slow, you know, it kind of controls what happens along that corridor.
You wanna spend the money, you can get the sewer to the dead middle of that.
With the right amount of money, you can do anything.
Be in the middle, I could get it either direction.
Abs, absolutely.
So it is available.
It, it is always available and it's a question of how much is worth to you to, to make that happen in that location. And I think that's why we added that language that prefers the, the development pattern from the out, you know, from those activity centers outward. The reality is, is yes, to your point, and I think that's why we acknowledge that, that it's there, it's, how do you handle that? Uh, again, um, adding new corridors, we did more or less just recognize what has been happening along Fury's Ferry, places like that, um, making that a professional corridor, calling it what it is essentially. Uh, again, the activity centers, um, one of the things I will point out is, and I mentioned it earlier, is at Lewiston and, uh, Appleton Harlem, what we did there was is that was just one activity center in the previous plan and we've actually broken that down into two types. Um, instead of, um, Appleton Harlem was just an employment center as a whole. Now it's kind of broken out, north side is the employment center side, the south side is more of that, um, residential mix, um, commercial, uh, side. Again, same thing, uh, at Gateway, um, recognizing the industrial component of the activity center as the employment center rather than just a, uh, commercial center. And again, we did upgrade some of the other, um, commercial centers, uh, Greenbrier, Evans to Locks, Columbia, Bel Air, things of that nature. Same thing out at the community crossroads, couple upgrades there, uh, Williamview, Riverwood West, um, just acknowledging that that little commercial, uh, node will be there. And, um, we did, uh, we, we actually had a very, fairly healthy debate about, um, showing it rather than those were more like stars or just little, uh, symbols on the map in the current plan to kind of showing, kind of say a parcel level, but acknowledging that, you know, this has some organic, uh, size to it. So, um, acknowledging that that was where we thought the, the crossroads should be in terms of, uh, size, give or take, but also adding language in there that talks about you need to be in immediate proximity, you know, touching not, you know, within eyesight, quarter mile, half mile of the act, of these crossroads or activity centers to just automatically do what you wanna do. I think that was important to, uh, mention. And again, the rural crossroads, um, talking a little bit more about what we might anticipate, sort of an acknowledgement of reality, um, we're getting interest and pressure in some of those rural areas for the, the marine and the boat storage, those types of things that make sense out there. Um, so how we're gonna handle that and where those need to realistically go, not just on any two and a half acres out in the west end of the county. So, uh, again, real quickly, um, to finish up here, the approval process, um, as you see a line here, uh, hopefully get a resolution forward, uh, through committee today, uh, get full commission to adopt the resolution next Tuesday, send it off to Regional Commission on Wednesday of next week. Uh, we anticipate, there's no hard and fast, uh, number, but we anticipate about a 30-day turnaround on their review. Uh, address any major comments, we don't anticipate, but again, if they do come up, we'll, we'll deal with it. Consider any minor comments and then back to, um, full commission for adoption of the comprehensive plan update, no later than June 30th. But again, I would hope that that'll occur in May. And then once that, uh, has been adopted by commission, then we will submit the final plan to DCA and that will keep us kosher. So I can answer any additional questions you might have.
Other questions?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Been a long, long go working on it, so.
It's been, it's been a very long process, uh, challenging process, but again, I would, uh, submit that between the consultants, uh, GMC and, uh, staff, uh, again, and the steering committee, I didn't mention, but that's a 35-member steering committee that, uh, over, about half of it were, uh, appointed by the elected officials, the rest of them were, uh, various agencies, Board of Education, um, uh, Development Authority, Chamber of Commerce, folks like that. So a lot of good folks in development community involved, business banking community involved, so a lot of goo, a good cross-section.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I make a motion to move this resolution to debate.
I second that.
So move. Uh, driver, saying from you today? All right, uh, Mr. Clayton?
Based on purposes, I have for you the, the budget report. I have for your, uh...
No, sir.
Thank you for that, sir. Any commissioner or public comment?
Public left. Public left.
Okay. All right, uh, we have a couple of items for...
I'll make a motion, we move those on to the full board.
Second.
All right. Uh, we are turned at 39.
I do think you need to work on taking, getting a lesson from Dewey here on being more efficient.